There are one, two, three, four, five audio recording devices, and one video recording device. Welcome to the actual Select Board meeting.
Smile.
Smile, that's right, that's right. The picture's ready to be taken care of. So, first meeting. Good to be back, you know, we've been away for so long. Uh, the first order of business is Select Board reorganization. So, I'm glad we turned the board over to you two gentlemen to kind of figure out where we want to go. Okay?
I might make a motion to nominate Tom.
All right. I'll give the motion in a second. This is not my idea of, of a Select Board, you know, having one chairman all the time. There's three members, and I can certainly understand you have one deputy chair, but if it works, possible rotation, I think, seems to work in the past.
Well, let me tell you what my focus is since we've discussed it.
Yeah.
My focus now, since we've got this shovel ready, proposing nominee in place, I see my biggest mission this year is to write in grants, trying to get that really squared away. And I don't have the ability to handle the board. Being a chair is a very responsible position. I don't really feel qualified, number one. Maybe next time around, if there is a next time, I'd entertain the notion, but I'm really, really not interested. If Todd has an interest, then I'd be glad to nominate him to that position.
I'm at the very beginning of this learning curve, so that's what I'm going to do.
Okay. And Tom, you do a really quality job, so I think there's something to be said about putting the best effort behind the best person.
Well, your strength is there. I appreciate that. It's just that a winged chair, you know, there's the responsibility to put the agendas together and kind of direct them, what our mission should be, or, you know, what things we want to get accomplished and that sort of thing. So, you know, that comes with that.
Right.
And Mary and I, over the last year and a half, I guess, you know, we've come up with what seems to work as far as the system is sorting that stuff out, so. So, I'm certainly not going to spend a lot of time fighting City Hall, but I just want to, you know, as far as being chairman, I just, it's not my vision of how the board should typically work, but I certainly understand the position we're in. And as far as working on grants and so forth, that's not the magical noise to my ear, right? Where we can spend time and energy and effort doing that. So, if we can do that, that's great with me.
So, I gave you a protest, and thank you for...
My concern.
Okay.
My concern. Any other discussion? All those in favor of me being a chair, say aye.
Aye.
Now, that, a motion for a vice chair.
I'll make a motion to make Tom hold a vice chair.
I'll second that.
Second that?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. While we're doing this reorganization, we should talk a little bit, are we prepared to talk about liaison as far as what departments we'd like to be working together? I think this would be an appropriate time to do that.
Yeah.
Tom, what are your concern? I mean, do you have something in particular that you'd like to get a feel for?
Well, more of the needs of the town. I mean, I think I'd feel comfortable working with any, any department that needs to be worked with, so. I do have an interest in the infrastructure issues, you know, particularly making sure we're keeping up to speed with the coming changes in the environment. So, it's kind of where I could lend some specialty advice or expertise.
Like where?
Uh, well, in particular, the problems that we had with that reading, they're going to happen again at some point. So, how do we build that? And when we do regular replacements and upgrades, making sure that they're done to more current engineering standards rather than, you know, usually the book that's being used is 60 years old, so it's, uh, needs to be rethought out. And I know DEP is, is paying particular attention to that stuff right now, too, so.
We heard that on Monday night.
That's right, that's right. I mean, much to their chagrin, it's, it's, needs to be done. And, you know, whether there were different designs that could have been incorporated in that particular instance, I don't know, but upgrades will need to be incorporated as time goes on. You know, you have a regular maintenance schedule to do, to do these things, to do replacements, so let's make sure that they're done to more modern specs rather than just straight replacements.
You interested in the highway department?
Like I said, anything that there's a need for, I'd be willing to.
Because that covert stuff is boom, right? Just where they're...
Yeah.
FEMA replaces ads, you know, in city...
It's very frustrating.
As it was, which is kind of crazy.
Yeah, it's very frustrating.
The, uh, if you, uh, I mean, I, that's where, and, and if, if Todd would like to do that, I mean, I've been working with Tom, but I've also been liaison with the police. So, what are your interests? Because I was thinking maybe I would shift and take care of the police and the fire department.
Since you came into the police a little bit later, I think you should stick with them, for sure. My interest, believe it or not, is council on aging this year. I'd like to really focus on that group. I don't want to displace anyone, but I'd like to listen in and, you know, be the ears of the board and hope the senior center of council of aging can get more and more senior to the town. So, that's my real interest. Short of that, when we had liaisons in the beginning, the trustees of the library were finding people to work with or to listen in on, so I do that gladly. And then, I really need to focus on these grants. I don't have a lot of extra time, and I was actually thinking of, I've been with the town hall folks for two years now, and I think it's really appropriate that I be out of the way for that, because otherwise, it's only three years, and we'd be dropped on someone's lap with no ability to overlap, you know, or something like that. It's a good group to listen with. We've had, you know, meetings probably every other month or something like that. There've been things, you know, that, that come up. But I strongly suggest I be out of that. The other thing I suggest I be out of, that I've been into for two years, is the Franklin County Inspection Program, which only meets four times a year. It's a, you know, Mary is the council member, is that right? For Asheville. So, hopefully that's a consistent thing that'll go beyond Select Boards coming in and going out and stuff like that. The Inspection Program is a pretty neat thing to be connected with. I think it'd be a great thing for Todd to get a sense of FERC by being involved with that one. It's a good group to...
Yeah, it's fun. I actually used to have a building license, you know, a little bit from my...
And these are mostly Select Board members who are sitting in on that, you know, thing. But I think we need to continue to support FERC with that presence and not just a hundred, so.
So...
And you said it's maybe four times a year, like it's not evenings or...
Four o'clock, I believe, they have heats in there, and, you know...
What kind of foods?
(laughing) Good question, excellent question. Does that sound like highway and that would be a good place? I don't think we need a liaison now to the library. The library trustees and folks like that, they find us.
Yeah.
They, they find us, and I, I really feel this, you know, library trustees, park commissioners, those sorts of things, they're elected, you know, it's not like they're appointed and need a lot of guidance, but as elected officials, I mean, they should be able to roll their own vote. That's my personal thing.
I commend what we did, we didn't do anything last year.
So, so we could kind of split it up. I think if I took over the police and the fire, and you've really actually been liaison back and forth with the office staff here.
I have for two years.
I mean, what I find generally is, as chairman...
You connect with them on your own.
I connect several times a week. Normally, I'm in the office a couple of times, so if I, if I kind of ran the traps on that, that's all right. You know, and I'll, you know, we'll report back when we do the liaison.
So, you'll take the town hall staff?
Town hall, is that all right?
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I did have one more tentative meeting set up with them, but these are for after July anyways, right?
Right. Well, no, I mean, this is actually, I'm thinking we'll start right now.
But I can make it for many hours.
The other thing that, that's on your plate, that we, I don't want to ignore...
Yep.
Is the school.
Right.
Right, being on the long range.
Every other week.
So, that, that's, that's great.
That is a good point. That is a liaison position, too.
So, I have highway, police, fire, and town offices. Were there any others that were... Really...
FERC, kind of the inspection.
Yeah, I did have that, sorry, yeah.
You said something about, do we have a council on aging or a senior?
We do, and we have, I want to be delicate there, because Doug currently represents the Select Board there, but if there's a place for me to...
Okay.
Be a presence without displacing, maybe he isn't interested any longer, and I can be a more official, but...
He, he did let me know that he is, he is interested in continuing it. However, I don't know if he would be equally happy to let it go, if there was somebody to step in, so I gotta check.
I, I'll check with him. I think that's the best thing to do.
But there's some issues coming up there.
There are some issues, and I can backstop him, you know, and when he's here, he can be the official liaison if he wants to. We can switch it around, and he can backstop me.
What, your interactions with the highway department? I mean, do you plan meetings with Tom, or it just kind of happens to answer?
I normally give him a call a day ahead of time, and if I can catch him at seven thirty.
How often do you have with me and Tom? How much does he want?
Twice a month.
Twice a month, okay.
I think he would rather see you, or I, or anybody once or twice a month than have to come in to a Select Board meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, whenever I'm, you know, if I got a day off or something, I'll just plan on catching up with him. Probably, I'm out of town, you know, all day, so. But I'm sure I can make it work, you know?
I think Friday, the grader, the new grader got delivered to the dealership.
Oh, really?
So, you may see it this week, is it right there?
I know.
I saw him, I intercepted him somewhere, and he said that they had called and said it was going to be delivered on the third, no, the second. That was Friday. And the thing, it was going to take them four or five days to put the wing on, the snowding. And I said, "No, all you have to do is take it off." I said, "So, why don't you tell them to just deliver it, and then, when it comes time, have them come up and help you put the wing on the first time?"
Right.
Because all it's going to do is cost, cost you money to take it off and put it on anyway. So, I thought that was a good thing, was going to intercept that. I tried, I tried to score a circuit back, which I think was great.
One more thing on the FERC. They prepare minutes that I typically give to the Select Board just in case they're interested in it. But on the first meeting, I probably don't go to the library or anything, but I probably do show and say goodbye to the board. I don't want to just fall off the earth. I've put a lot of time into that board.
So, let me back up a second, because my machine was, was the Inspection Program, right?
Correct.
And that's what you're talking about?
That's what I'm talking about. It's about ten guys there, or ten girls and guys, and it's a, it's a good group of people. I don't want to just show up anymore.
No, I get it, but...
But you would be the official liaison. And I probably leave that, there you go.
Right.
When you get together with Tom, I would strongly urge him to get the specs together for the new truck if he wants the new truck before winter.
Yeah. It's got to be a lead time, of course.
Foot driving, getting the specs for the grader, I mean, a lot, a lot of studying. It shouldn't have to be rebuilding the wheel to figure out how to spec out a truck, so. And I did get a telephone call before town meeting from a citizen, and she said that she was reading the paper, and she noticed that Holly had a $150,000 truck.
Yeah, honestly, yeah.
And I think it was Shelburne had a $170,000 truck.
Already invested $150,000, too.
So, I don't think it would be, I mean, it would be worth doing if maybe these highway superintendents could call, talk, at least talk to each other. I mean, I know that there's procurement laws and all those sorts of things that have to be done, but...
One of the things I noticed on, on one of the cheaper vehicles that was mentioned in the paper was that it was a rebuilt something or other. It wasn't a new truck, it was, yeah.
No, my personal opinion on that is we already have a used truck.
Right.
So, that's...
And I'll be dealing with Tom on the dam, because he works very closely on that structure. And she, I'll be visiting with him on different things.
Good. All right. Bill, did you have something to weigh in?
Yeah, there are two organizations that need liaison from Select Board. One is the Franklin Regional Transit Authority. They have a place on their board for a member from each town. It's been years since I think anybody from Nashville has gone to their board meetings. And the other is the Franklin Regional Planning Board.
That might be why we don't have the Transit Authority coming through Asheville, I'm very...
Well, there's a lot of, yeah. I mean, one of the problems, right now, there's a statewide study being done on transit routes and analysis of transit routes. And from my point of view, one of the problems that it's faced is that when you have low-income housing, subsidized housing, but no transportation available, it's, it makes it less desirable to live in a place where you can get, you know, affordable housing, but there are no jobs and no ways to get to a job. So, it would be, I think, to Asheville's advantage to have a bus that comes through in the morning and comes back at night, so that people could commute to work.
But that's, that's a bigger issue than what we're talking tonight as far as having, at least have somebody on the seat.
Exactly, but that's the kind of thing that the Transit Authority needs to hear. And towns that don't have bus routes tend not to go, and so they never hear that.
So, Transit Authority and what's the second organization?
Franklin Regional Planning Board, which is a, there are two members from each town that have places, Select Board, and I guess Planning Board. And they meet monthly, fourth Thursday, I think. And they deal with everything, land use, transportation, you know, everything with the Planning Board, open space, economic development, all of these things are part of their responsibility. And there's some very interesting stuff going on that comes out of that, and it's a, we...
Well, there's certainly plenty for the three of us to be busy two nights a week all the way through.
Two?
Yeah, at least two. Oh, yeah, yes. Two nights a week.
Yeah, I take two nights off. But Planning Board's an important organization, because what they do is regional, you know, I mean, covers all of the county and then some specific, a lot of zoning work, things like that.
Mary?
I have been on the Regional Planning Board, I think I mentioned to you, I didn't go to the last one because the council was reading at the same time, so I went to the council. And I believe Ken Miller from the Planning Board has been on that for a few years. And I believe Holet was on the Transit Board last year.
The last meeting I went to for FRTA, I did bring up busing service to Asheville, because basically there's none, but we do pay a small fee. And they said, and I think I brought it back to the board, but it's been some time, that if we could document what it was we thought we wanted, they would come in, they would visit with us, there is a price.
Above and beyond our assessment.
What we already pay. Correct. So, depending what we wanted, they'd work out a cost for us, and they also said they'd be willing to come and, you know, meet with the Select Board. Now, whether that was happening during budgeting times, and so it didn't fit at that time. Maybe why we didn't have to come.
Well, we did, just barely fit, so. All right. Do we feel like we're pretty well reorganized for the time being to figure out all those sorts of things?
I think so. I think, you know, going forward, we can look at those two again, and see as things settle out, if it makes sense to... It's not that we have to go to every single meeting, but at least have a presence there.
This is a, this is a fluid living kind of thing, you know, where we'll have to prioritize, I mean, so much of anything that's available. Not really on the agenda, but I'm picking up for the next agenda. You know, we want to go over the budget that was passed at town, and kind of Todd, bring you up to date a little bit on that. And Mary, you can get a package together for Todd ahead of time, so he can kind of figures that out. But the budget that was passed, there's about $4,400 between what we project our levy would be, so it's...
Of course.
It's really close. But that'll, that'll be one of the things, we don't, we don't get to at the next meeting, the meeting after, but we all need to kind of get up to speed on.
Okay.
And it's good for us to revisit that. So, on the agenda tonight, I mean, this was designed specifically to be a, a brief meeting, mostly for reorganization, so we can get set for our next meeting on the 19th. Oh, while we're on that, how, how, before we get too far down the line, we've been in the habit here since last fall of meeting every other week. Are we still a little bit of that, or...
Or...
Certainly this time of year for me, from May, June, July, in my life, every other week is fine. And it's, actually worked out better than I thought it would, but they do end up being, like, there are, there are times when we have to adjourn the meeting because we're not really posted for the next day, you know, and it gets to 11:00 or 11:30. But, you know, we should be, if we had it laid out in advance, we should be able to...
During budget season, we go to every other week for a budget.
So, yeah, during the budget deal, that's what we did last year, and that's what we'll do this next year.
And among those lines, I record every session, and I put a copy of it to on- list computer under Select Board Digital Voice. So, if you ever need a copy, just talk to Mary, she'll have it. It's, it's downloaded, and I get right up and leave and download it, so be prepared to use that.
So, are we okay with staying with every other week?
More weeks.
Yeah, it's more weeks, which the next, more weeks will be than 19th.
Second after, uh, second.
And there's a published list of more days.
Oh, is it?
Is it consistent every week, there's no change? Mondays? And that doesn't change?
This is, this is odd. I just, I just want to pull this, get reorganized. Does that, that work for you? At least describe the Monday nights?
Yeah.
All right. We added to the agenda Nolan and Decker tree agreements.
I wanted to, I have Mary have, has the tree agreements on stationery. I want her to go over there and get them to sign the easements, and I think it would be a fine show to, before they sign the easement, keep them the agreement on the trees, so that, put our best foot forward on that. And we're bringing the clerk over with me, because he needs a memory, endorse their signature. So, that's identical to the one we started earlier a couple of months ago.
So, Todd, this is the easement, you can tell me.
Yeah, I was at the meeting that, where you were talking about the easement.
The actual easements, the building easements.
Well, there's, there's this other concern that's in our inspection reports about these beautiful oaks that are on the dam, at the big, you know, and...
Where are they?
By Ole's house.
Ole's boat ramp.
By the boat ramp, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And in our last report, they were talking about taking down these beautiful trees, and because of their, they compromised the structure around the dike. But at that, at that point where they are, it's a very shallow dike.
It's like the end of it.
Yeah, it's at the very end. So, we had town council last year draft up an agreement that said, "Listen, we'll do everything we can to talk to the Office of DMSafety and persuade them to leave these trees, because they're healthy. The minute they start decaying, we'll take them down, and we'll get them out of there." But the Nolans begged and pleaded for us to leave those, because it would be hard to bear without those five trees.
Yeah.
So, everyone knows, it's very transparent, engineers know it, they'll probably go on the inspection report that we had this agreement signed, it'll look good for us. It'll be, it's, it's a good thing in negotiating with the, both the Nolans and Scott Decker, who was very close to the Nolans, to see that we're working this way, because they're both signing over an easement to us free of charge.
There aren't any trees on Decker's property?
No.
No, there was a...
But he had voiced a concern at one of our onsite meetings about those trees, so he's, they're connected.
Okay, I see.
The whole thing is very productive to our end, goal, and it doesn't cost anything, so I think these are all pretty positive.
I'll simply express the trust, I think, to make sure that the structure is stable.
Okay, so you're ready to go do that?
I'm ready to do that this week, once we have this.
Right, we've talked about that, and made all those arrangements.
Has it changed?
And directed town council to make the documents. Is that the one we're gonna be using?
I believe there are three copies here, and they have a place for each of our signatures. So, I'll sign all three.
There's something other than a certificate page?
Flip it over.
Trying to save the trees.
Save the trees.
Trees.
Correct. Save the trees. All the way around.
Yeah, they need you in the little one.
Right. So I've got to get those signed up and bring them back to Mary and one to town council, of course, and one to Nolan's. Thank you.
Very good. As a point of information, you've got, um, a retaining wall?
Yes, um, you have, it's just information. You have a copy of the bill there. I signed off on a bill, but I asked just to hold it to make sure that-
This will be on, this will be on the next war.
Correct. But I wanted you to be aware that the, the terms for the retaining wall contract changed when they went from the town to the trustees. And for the town, there was no retainer required upfront. But for the trustees, there was a, because of their, you know, it's not a municipal organization, there was a fifty percent retainer, I believe. I'd have to look at the number again. And we're being invoiced for a third of that.
Which is what we figured, right?
That's right. There's not, no surprise there. I talked to Alden and, you know, it's something that they, they want to get going on this before the trees leaf out because they're doing topographic surveys and stuff like that. So he's approved it already, but they want to get their one-third as quick as possible.
So the, the board of trustees for the field, Field Board, they've sent a check to Ty and Bob for twelve thousand six hundred dollars, which is fifty percent of the study.
Correct.
And of that retaining wall, since we have a third, that our portion of that's forty-two.
These are monies that have already been set aside.
Right, we had twelve thousand dollars, I believe, in that.
Yeah.
Certainly, quite, quite a amount of visits, so we've got it in this fiscal year. So that's, that's right. We hand that back.
Mary, can you give me a scanned copy of that, email it please? Thank you.
Mr. Pearl?
Yeah, I apologize if you had any contact to do at the last minute. But we want to get started on some pre-construction work on radio system. One of the main things we have to do is to do a structural, have a structural analysis done to have an engineering firm say that the tower can hold the antennas that we're putting up. It's pretty pro forma, doubt we'll have any problems, although our own tower in Sheldon was declared infish. I mean, you know, so we're gonna have to repair that. But this one is family news, the police have kept good records on it. So I'm not expecting it to cost very much. But getting the engineering firm and having them do it could take three weeks, four weeks, whatever. And until we get the structural analysis, we can't really do anything else. The other thing that we might want to start doing before the end of the year is there are some electrical outlets that have to be put inside the shelter to power our equipment. So we have to hire an electrician and run some, oh, a six-foot conduit with some wire. So that's another thing that we can do before we start ordering equipment. So I'm estimating fifty-five hundred dollars, which we can, or you can take out of the existing, what, nine, ninety-five hundred?
Right, there's nine thousand dollars.
Right. That's been appropriated prior this year. So I just want to get these, that thing, primarily the structural analysis, out of the way. The memorandum of understanding, the whole project is being drafted as we speak. You should have that happen a week or so.
Forget about five nights.
Probably. She's working on it. No matter if this outline exactly what the deal is, whether you describe this, you know, town purchasing equipment after it's, it's up, transfer ownership to us, and we take care of it after that. No continuing charges, specific charges to the town.
Up to date what we're doing on that antenna for the Spruce Corner and stuff.
Well, I've heard of it.
And we voted twenty-six thousand dollars, I believe, from town meeting.
Right, yeah.
And there was nine thousand dollars. Actually, that nine thousand dollars was at least two years ago.
Right.
And then it got carried forward. So we have money in this fiscal year that we can expend. And of course, the balance that we just voted won't be available, so after-
I understand that, but this is kind of getting, you know, the paper layer out of the other.
Well, you know, those two towers that fell over on Red Lock were probably somebody got, they were, they were sound when they weren't.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing they take into consideration, what, you know, wings and what type of antennas are up there. If it dishes, then you've got a problem with the wing. In our case, there're gonna be two whips on a single bracket, one up, one down. And so we're not anticipating any problems with towers relevantly, so.
Yeah, I have quite a few friends over in the Adams, North Adams area, and they were just freaked out that they actually had to talk to each other for a couple of days because they didn't have cellphone service, you know, families.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's hard these days when you're deprived of modern conveniences.
But, no, that's, does anybody have an issue with that for, for the scene?
I was just gonna say for Todd. Todd, Bill is the Furcar Council representative to the Franklin County Emergency Communications System. So he doesn't do this just out of, you know, interest. I mean, he's there representing for that.
Yeah.
One thing he does.
I don't represent actually. You're at large.
No, I represent the council. But knowing about this dead spot for a long time, I've been pushing very hard to get it fixed. And they have fixed others in similar ways. Sunday entrance had a blackout spot by Cliffside Apartments.
Yeah.
You know that? And a large percentage of their calls are to those apartments, and they couldn't communicate. So there's a tower on a hill right behind those. They boarded a repeater. We put it in, we operated, and now they have coverage there. So and Buckland did the same thing. Buckland boarded a repeater, it's now our firehouse in the bottom of the mountain.
So the other, the other dead spot we have in town that there is no cure for at this point is Apple Valley.
Correct. Yeah, that's one of the major, there's a little pocket too in there. We had hoped that Berchley's could cover some of it, and it doesn't. We had hoped that the Buckland repeater would help, and it does, but marginally.
Where's that one located, that repeater?
On the Buckland Firehouse. Originally, it was placed in the steeple at Mary Lyman Church. Then it was moved to the firehouse, and then we did some testing from our transfer station to see if we put it there, but doesn't happen. It didn't happen. So that's, from the transfer station down and up at the Gaiety Road is pretty much dead. Although I've gotten, I've reached shelter control from Clark, from the O.T.
So is there any problem with letting proceed, is there, so we've got money appropriated and?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a good idea for Select Board to handle pockets of money that comes with the state.
No, that's all off and suspended. Treasure likes that, a lot of big bills coming from the schools situation.
Yeah, right.
Keeps us, yeah, keeps us lit.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? The only thing I see that's in the folders here is there's a couple of meetings, uh, May twenty-second, Thursday, May twenty-second, this conflict of interest law.
I can't think of that.
That's at the, uh, over Transit Center, that's where those meetings take place. Uh, and the other one is Communication Fundamentals for Select Boards. That's in June, I may be able to make that one. I certainly don't believe I'll make the, the May twenty-seventh one.
You should try to do that if you can, just a word of advice, the first one. A lot of things, Select Board members will be there, and they're always good quality meetings, a lot of good contacts. And we can commute to these together, that's, that's allowed, if you ever think of it. I know you're on your way back.
You'll probably get on your way back from work.
There is one more email I saw that came relative to meetings that's just worth pointing out here real quick. It had to do with this pipeline, did you see that or not?
I think so many.
Yeah, it's, it just references a, a meeting that's coming up on June third, from six to eight. I'm gonna try to attend this, so, because I know this is an issue that's bubbling in the background, and I don't know what it is.
It's a GCC?
Huh?
It's a GCC?
It is.
Yeah, so. I didn't see that.
Okay, was sent to the Select Board just today, I think.
Well, I haven't opened mine.
Okay. But this looks like a good one, too. A lot of, there are people from the rec, from the pipeline company, people from different sides. So just to be a fly-in law there, this is a, would be a good idea.
Anything else that we have here?
I don't have anything else.
Hollett?
Just a question, maybe it's for Ron. The newspaper indicated that Colrain did not pass their one-eighth agreement for the expenses for Smoke Hawk. Is that something that will be wrought to or part of a concern of your long-range planning committee? Or are you intending to kind of try to keep those separate?
It's a good question. No, they actually, Colrain has representatives there, the representatives, Larry Shearer, he was here the night he came. And if one, in my understanding, is if one town votes against it, it's off, it's off, you know, because of our regional agreement. So that will probably be discussed a little bit at the next long-range planning meeting, which I can tell you when it is. It's usually the second and fourth Thursday of every month. So, and I think we're meeting in Sheldon this, this month.
And there's more town meetings and more votes to go?
Yeah.
And has Plainfield met and voted, so we know what happened with the scene? I haven't seen anything happen.
I heard it was all in the front.
All of us did.
Because they have Buckland's meeting tonight.
But it's a Plainfield and Seashore for Seashore, right? Yep. Thank you.
We'll figure it out. They may not do one without the other. That vote really empowered the school committee to move forward on those.
On regional agreement, yeah.
So we have some appointments during budget for the next meeting that people that want to come in to see us will put that on the agenda. The other thing that we'll want to get caught up on the next meeting will be file minutes.
Absolutely.
You know, let's get caught right up to date, so we can keep up to date with that and budget discussion. Like I said, if that fits in next time, it fits in. If not, but we gotta get, start getting set up to, to move forward for the fiscal year. The other thing that we did last year, and Ron, you were here, how useful or not useful it is for us to really sit and have a discussion of prioritizing what we'd like to get accomplished. And I think that's, I would think in your spot, that would be a really good discussion to have. Not that we knock all the cans off the stump, so to speak, but we, at least it gives us an idea of what we're shooting at.
Right.
And the staff, too, I think. So we can work on that. And I think that should be a part of the discussion for the nineteenth, is just priorities. Prioritize and kind of figure out what needs to be done. Alright, anything else? Ricky, what do you got?
Well, I was fresh on my mind and following the news. I was really concerned and dismayed about the town meeting, the evidence, with prayers at it because they were specifically religious and I think very, very, very inappropriate to have that town meeting. Now, that's not what the court says, but I don't agree with the court's rule either. And I think that we should really make the decision not to do that again.
What time did it end, is what I want to know. Between that and the Brownies, it was my understanding that all that was supposed to happen before ten o'clock. But I think it went over significantly.
I don't think they started before, before ten o'clock. And just, you know, if somebody wants to come in and say something, that's one thing. But to bring into religion and to talk about Jesus Christ, that's a totally different thing. And I think it's very appropriate.
Thanks.
So I would like the Select Board to do something about that for the next time.
I have to agree with Ricky because it was very much, when you bring in Jesus Christ, Christian. And if it was sort of a prayer that included everybody and was not so specific, you might have a different feeling about it. But it, it seemed to be leaving out a lot of people in that process, and maybe that's why.
How does that get handled from a protocol point of view? Is that usually the clerk who arranges all that stuff?
No, I, you'd have to talk to the clerk and the moderator. For town meetings, moderators meeting. We're just participants.
Yeah.
Seems like we did our share of participating.
Yeah, I think so.
Alright. Anything else? Nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Any discussion? No, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven. Forty-seven minutes long.